Good evening. We have a forum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. Mr. Sarzinski will not be able to make it tonight, so it'll be the four of us. We have not a lot to do, but we do have the PVPC going to be here for some general information and to meet the new replacement of Larry. Let's see. Did you have a chance to look at the Pride plans, John?
No.
No, not yet. We're not ready to sign off on them.
You know, here's what... They're basically just saying they've renumbered the stuff. I'd say, I'm gonna make a motion to amend according to what they say their revised dates are.
Okay.
And if you find that anything is incorrect when you look at it, we can yell at them again.
Okay.
That's all that they're saying is just they changed the dates on this?
Dates and some numberings.
Dates and numberings, that's what they're saying.
You mean what, the sheet numbers?
Yes.
In August of 1916, we approved a set of plans that were dated May of 16. And you look down this list, and the only thing that was not changed was the, it looks like the first page and the lighting proposal date back to 2016. Everything else was updated one way or another to reflect the change in conditions or something like that.
Okay.
So, without reading it all, I'll make a motion to amend Pride by updating the list of drawings that are part of the plan.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion passes 4-0 with one absent. Okay. While we're reading for Larry, we've got a couple bills to pay. We have our first quarter of 2018 paid to approve for each of us, total of 575. What are your motion? I'll make a motion to approve payroll.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0, one absent. And we need some stamps. Stamps are 50 cents each, beginning in 2018.
Still moved.
Looking for $250. Motion?
Second.
And second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 4-0, one absent. Thank you. The Finance Committee is having a meeting on April 4th at 6 o'clock in the Town Hall to talk about the fiscal 2019 budget and some of the draft articles for the annual town meeting.
I think that's a tri-board meeting, I think.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the Finance Committee. There's also a General Department meeting at 11 o'clock in the morning tomorrow to discuss the 2018 and 19 budget. And, let's see, Capital Planning Committee, some, to basically discuss elections, Select Ward warrant, and some of the town meeting articles.
So, I just want to note the death of passing of John Waschkewitz. Went to his wake this afternoon. Been active in the town for many years, and most recently as the part-time driver of the Senior Center.
Okay.
Classmate.
He will leave us. I remember everybody called him, who was his nickname?
Yaiqo.
Yaiqo, yeah. Classmate.
Those are what, classmates?
It's a classmate.
Okay. Okay. And...
Well, we're waiting for Larry. I've got some information on the CPA committee.
Okay.
I'm the planning board representative to the CPA committee, and I just got an email from the state regarding the funding or lack of funding. As you know, Hadley passed the CPA tax of 3%, and the state promised the funding of equal shares. In other words, if the town kicked in a certain amount of money, the state would match it. Well, now, the increase in number of towns has gone up to 172 towns, and the amount of money has not changed, or the pool of money has not changed. So, the contribution now from the state is at 11.2%. That's with the 2018 budget. So, the state once again has kind of renamed on their promise, but they're going to allow us to increase the tax to the Registry of Deeds. Evidently, when you transfer to the Registry of Deeds, some of that money goes into CPA funding. So, they're gonna allow for an increase in Registry of Deeds.
Who's gonna increase that? The state is?
The state is. The state will, yeah.
Increase the fees?
Yeah.
They're gonna increase the fee or just increase the split?
Well, they're gonna increase the fees, and if you have 3%, like Hadley does, they're going to favor those towns who have a 3% in giving them a larger contribution. Of course they will, because, as opposed to those communities who have 1% and 2%.
But, they still reduced it from 50% match, right?
Correct.
Down to 11%?
Well, 11%, I'm not sure if that's just the state funding or is that the Registry of Deeds pool?
No, that is, that is the state funding. It comes from the Registry.
So, why doesn't, why doesn't...
So, it's 11.5% from the state in the first round, and there's, you know, it was part of it, it was email with the people that are involved in the community preservation. They want to lobby your legislators and hope that they win an increase in number and the funding.
So, why doesn't the town reduce their share instead of 3% or 1%?
Well, once again, I don't want to make this too much of a political comment, but when I was in practice, the state share of Mass Health Medicaid was 18% of the budget. And just, I talked to Peter Kokot just before he passed away, and he was on a committee and saying, "Now, the state share is 40%. Of course, there's gonna be some reimbursement from the federal government, but nevertheless, that part of the budget has skyrocketed. So, there's not gonna be a lot of money left over for roads, bridges, schools, or anything else. It's gonna be tight unless there's a dramatic tax increase."
Let me ask you something. What does the CPA have in their slush fund?
Uh, we've got, there's a certain amount of not committed money and a certain amount of money committed, and I would say the total amount is 700,000 or 800,000.
Someone told me it was a million points.
Well, it, it can be if you add up all the monies we still hold. Some of the monies we have allocated, but it has not been spent. So, as the bills come in, so, you're right, it could be that amount of money in the fund, but some of it is already allocated. We just got a breakdown finally. The finances are, are not as accurate as I would like to see them, so, but Larry is gonna be doing a policy thing for the CPA, or you probably, right?
Probably.
One thing I don't like about that CPA, you gotta go by their guidelines, and that, far as I'm concerned, is nothing but a luxury tax. We, we need money to fix our infrastructure and everything else, but the state says you can't use it for this, but we're paying the biggest portion. This, to me, is bull.
I totally agree, but that's when the legislation was passed in order to get the number of votes from the cities and towns.
That's, that's why the town should reduce it and take that money and put that into our infrastructure and things that we need to fix.
That may be a good point, but...
I was contacted by Jane Nevin Smith for the Senior Center Building Committee. They were initially planning to file their site plan approval tonight. They have kicked it off six weeks to May 15th to file.
Okay. Well, that's fine. File is just a file, and then we do scheduling after that. We schedule the hearings and the reviews.
Don't you, don't you vote to have it put on there, or is just that...
No, they just come in and file. That, that is not gonna be the hearing. That's just gonna be, they're gonna come in with the drawings, and then we'll schedule the public hearing once they file.
So, anybody can just walk in and it's automatically filed?
Yes.
What if you don't accept it?
We've never not accepted something.
The only reason we would not accept the filing is if the application was incomplete.
Yes. Not, not the right, we've told, we've sent, we have sent people back because they haven't had all the, the stuff, like the correct number of drawings, the mailing lists, or the applications.
How can you put them down there without seeing stuff?
Well, they come in with the drawings and the application and the sets of the butters, and we schedule a public hearing.
Well, if they do that, then...
Is the library coming in as well?
No. The library, but that's why the Senior Center is delaying its filing, because they are working with the library on a common drainage plan. And the library had not started working on a drainage plan, so they were not ready to file, and I think we made it pretty clear that we wanted the filing to show parking and drainage for the entire parcel.
Correct.
Right. The... It should be made perfectly clear that this is not picking on them in any way, shape, or form, and that we do it for every development.
You know, I did explain, it was the same thing we did for Home Depot. We wanted to see complete drainage design and parking requirements for the entire parcel.
Right, for the build-out.
When they, whatever it might be.
For build-out. The, I did talk to the Jane, and I talked to their architect. I says, "Absolutely, you need to have the reviewing drainage plan done by a separate engineer." They were gonna use, I believe, Mark from Berkshire Design. I says, "And if you want to avoid spending the money for review of zoning," I says, "The planning board will review it for zoning compliance." The downside of that is you save some money, more than likely, but it'll also draw out the hearing process, 'cause that's gonna take longer properly than if you have an engineer do it. So, I says, "That'll be your choice when you come in, which way you wanna do it." They understood.
I'll tell ya, I got a big problem with that, with that drainage, with that underground drainage system, 'cause what they did in this building, if you guys recall, they put legion basins on this north wall, and then they ended up with mold on this whole side of this building downstairs. And that's the same thing that's gonna happen to those houses and the butters when they put all that water on the ground.
When we see the plan, we can talk about it.
I know, but it just, what gets me is an architect turns around and signs off under this, right? And he's not held liable for that. Then the who is it? The town? That's what I, I can't understand.
We'd love to see how that, what that is when, when we see the plans. Do you want me to get Larry?
Um, yeah, yeah, sure.
So, it's kind of a hodgepodge of talking with Larry and finalizing whatever else we're gonna be doing.
Yep.
Good morning. Would you guys go outside and have a powwow?
No, no, show her the...
Show me her back.
The plant.
Oh.
With all the APR, all the preserved farm land stuff. We're going over the master plan, you know, using the die to save everything else.
Well, we were a good kickoff for it, because when Ducock signed the bill, he signed it in the farmhouse in Hadley.
Oh, well, that's even better. Is it your farmhouse in Hadley?
No, the Carson's.
Oh, gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. This is Susan Westa, W-E-S-T-A.
Westa?
Yes, Susan Westa. Susan is replacing me. She'll be taking over the Hadley PVA program. She'll be taking over after you... Oh, PVA programs that we have. So, I brought her in tonight, and this is her introduction. I thought we could go over the implementation plan for the master plan and kind of highlight those things that you kind of wanna start her working on, and that'll sort of be the framework for the next scope for next year's Planning Board Assistance Program.
Okay.
So, did everybody bring their copies that I gave them two weeks ago?
No, I didn't bring them in.
Okay, fair enough.
I have an extra one.
I would have said today.
We're, we're familiar.
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, you need a refresher.
Okay.
There you go. So, I think it's a matter of, you know, starting off with, you know, the higher priority ones, the ones that we thought would be most easily achievable at the shortest timeframe.
Okay.
So, Susan, you wanna kind of run down?
Yeah.
She's been going over these for the last, she's, she's been on almost a month.
Almost.
Almost, almost her anniversary.
Where do you originate from?
I actually originate from Buffalo, New York, but I've been living in Connecticut for the last 20 years.
Okay, where in Connecticut?
In stores.
Oh, way down there.
Yeah.
Stores is a home of UConn.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
Every classmate's with there.
So, not that they're different from you.
Yeah, so I think she's got a little flavor of the Amherst town gown type relationship. She may have problems and issues that go along with it.
Absolutely. I've found out that.
Are you over yet with the UConn women, Lucy?
Oh, man. Two years in a row.
Maybe it would be helpful to start by getting to know us. It's where we watch into things.
Let her continue, 'cause she's got a few more things, her resume, and then if you have a good idea, you can really intimidate her and go across the board.
Okay. So, my background is in community and environmental planning.
Also, she was on the planning board.
I was on the planning board for the last five years in the town of Mansfield, where UConn is. I have a master's degree in environmental science, and started out my career doing environmental planning work in consulting firms. And I got more into community planning work through that opportunity. Then, I moved to Connecticut 20 years ago because my husband took a position teaching at UConn, and I then began working for the University of Connecticut Cooperative Extension for an organization called the Green Valley Institute. And we did land use education programs for communities in northeastern Connecticut, which is a fairly rural region where the university is, and communities that are much more rural than that, too. In some ways similar to here. Driving around today, the main difference I noticed in the land is that it's not flat. In northeastern Connecticut, it is hilly. But there are farms there, and a lot of forest land as well. And then, for the last five or six years, I've been focusing on downtown and village center revitalization with the Connecticut Main Street Center. So, I have quite a breadth of planning-related experience, and I'm excited to be able to start sharing that now in Pioneer Valley.
Okay. I'm Joseph Rodnick. I've been on the planning board for 45 years.
Wow.
So, the original intent was, growing up on a farm, I wanted to try to keep as much open space and preservation of farmland that was possible, but it has morphed into a semi-career.
Yeah, I'm Bill Dwyer. I'm a lawyer, and I've been on the board for 31 years.
73. Keeping track.
Okay.
Jim Axalowski. I've been on the planning board for 35 years.
Plus over 100.
I'm a retired engine, mechanical engineer.
Okay.
Ready for reelection, you know, for reelection this year, so at the end of this, it'll be, you know, according to five-year term, so that'll be, that'll be 40 years.
Some paid political act.
Paid political act, yeah. I'm running on a poll. So, anyway, and just a little bit about the valley. I don't know if Larry's told you much about it, you've learned much about it, but the Connecticut River Valley, which I have houses east Hadley, there is some of the most fertile land in America. The only land that is more fertile, considered more fertile than the Connecticut River Valley basin is the Mississippi River Delta. That's a fact. And the US government refers to soil as Hadley soil. And it's because of the glaciers eons ago, and from about, I wanna say, Sunderland take through probably up to about Hoyoke. And then, when you get below Hoyoke, of course, you've got the cities that have kind of grown in, but then once you get over the line into Connecticut, you know, subfields, the infills, and through there, it's very similar soils. And Hadley is the largest agricultural community in the state of Mass.
We have the most acres in APR of any community in Massachusetts. Not per capita, but raw, the raw number of acres under agricultural preservation restriction, protection, is the largest of any community in Massachusetts.
And what is the primary type of farming that is done in town?
There's, I wouldn't say primary, it's a variety. There's tobacco grown, there's potatoes, corn, asparagus, and vegetables in general. A variety of vegetables grow.
And dairy.
And dairy.
It's the best asparagus you're gonna find in Hadley.
I have been to the asparagus festival.
Yeah, Hadley, it's, it's, they call it Hadley asparagus, but all the, again, up and down the Connecticut River Valley, it's very similar, but Hadley asparagus, you go to Boston, and Hadley asparagus is a premium.
Yeah.
And a lot, I mean, years ago, there was thousands of acres grown with a disease, a disease or blight wiped, kind of wiped it out. Fungus wiped it out about, probably 40 years ago. And they've since been reintroduced with a resistant crop, and it's beginning to make a comeback. And most of the farmers that raise it around here literally sell locally almost everything they raise. I don't know how much is actually shipped to Boston anymore. I couldn't answer that question. Sweet corn, obviously, is a big crop. Tobacco was up and down. Last year was a very good crop, good price for it, and there's a lot of farmers talking about raising it again, but there's so many tobacco bars that have been removed for one reason or another without the space to dry it or to cure it. They're limited what they could be, really be raised.
Tobacco used to be huge.
Yeah, shade tobacco was huge up and down the valley. I mean, there was thousands of acres of between shade and field tobacco.
And also onions.
Onions, too.
But the, the, the leaf was the outside.
Right.
For cigar, for rolling cigars. Connecticut River Valley tobacco was renowned for that.
Yeah, when, when our parents were kids, if you would, or more than that, onions were big. Onion sets and stuff like that, and then it kind of basically stopped being grown for whatever reason. And about 40 years ago, my uncle's had us farm, and I raised two acres of onion sets. I was the largest rate grower of onion sets in the whole valley. And it drew a lot of attention because, "How's that gonna work?" You know, "Did it work well? Did you make money?" And this, this, that, and everything else. And since then, there's a little bit more onions growing. I mean, they're not raising sets, they're raising the seeds and stuff like that, but there's, there's, I wouldn't say there's a lot growing, but it, and that didn't, I'm not taking credit for doing anything except raising it for myself, but some farmers probably got the hint, "Hey, you know, there's, there's, there's a dollar to be made doing that."
Why don't you tell about your SoundCloud enterprise?
Okay.
Don't hold nothing back.
Introduce yourself.
I'm John Michkowski, retired, I was self-employed in the welding business, on a planning board for four years. This is the new, that's the old.
Were you on the select board?
Yeah. Sewer commissioner, served them.
John, John's got a lot of years in various town boards.
And I know all these guys for like 35 years, 40 years from my time when I started as a planner in North Hampton. So, there's a lot of, a lot of history. I'm feeling bad about leaving you guys.
Mike Sarzinski was not here. He's, he's out of town today, but he's probably the newest member on the board, but he also has a long history of Hampshire County Commissioner and other things in town, so...
He, he updates John. John's at four, Mike's got five.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got a lot of other experience in town for other, other town boards.
And he's an investment advisor in North Hampton, works for Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo.
So, these guys have a ton of institutional memory. So, and they've been doing this really without planning assistance or limited planning assistance for the 40 years. So, they are unbelievably experienced, and I think the challenge gonna be when you decide to all retire.
Yes. That's, we're, we're working that through. It's in the master plan.
It is, bud.
I am the daytime contact for the planning board, and any email to planning@hadleyma.org goes directly to me.
Okay.
And that address is on our webpage, as well as, I'm sure, if you just type it into any computer at PVPC.
Yeah, we, we have our user group for the planning board. They're all in.
So, if there's questions at night, Bill is literally, like you said, the daytime contact, and I'm the nighttime contact.
Okay.
So, if you're working late and you really want to finish this project and get out, he's the one to call.
I was, I am the PVPC Commissioner for Hadley. John is the alternate.
Okay.
And I was the chairman for six years.
Ah, all right.
A while back.
Great. One interesting thing, Jim was talking about the history of the valley. A great book on the valley by Richard Little, a geohistory professor at Greenfield Community College, is called Dinosaurs, Dunes, and Drifting Continents. It's the history of our valley, how it formed, you know, the drifting of the continents, the glacier that was above our head 20,000 years ago, then melted and formed this great Lake Hitchcock, and the dam was at Rocky Hill, Connecticut. And eventually, that dam burst and left the sediment in the outline of our valley. So, it gives you, "Why is this part clay and this part more sandy loam?" So, it gives you a great geohistory of...
Yeah.
Lake Hitchcock.
Pardon?
Lake Hitchcock.
Lake Hitchcock. Anyway.
Yes.
So, okay.
All right, so that's a great start.
Also, Bill's clerk, I'm chairman. Okay.
All right. So, Larry handed me your implementation schedule, and I've taken a look at it. I thought that probably the best thing to do would be to go through those top priorities that you identified for this year, the things that you identified in 2018 to implement, and to find out if you've made any progress on them yet, if anything's happened yet, to get me up to speed, and then also to think about, you know, those five or six things that make the most sense to start with moving forward.
So, we'll start right off by disregarding.
Happy?
Okay.
Boy, that's a good start.
Please pop up.
I just want to put, make sure it's high on the radar, is we need to have a recreational marijuana bylaw ready to go for Fall Town Meeting in early October. So, we actually, that means we, we basically have to have it in our hands, so we have finalized the text by the end of August.
Well, my plan is to have that done by the end of June. Have at least a model drafted. And then Susan will be taking it, you know, down the town and getting into it.
Right, because obviously, other towns are...
I saw East Hampton already adopted one, so they went up and they're on.
Yeah, they did. I think Harris has.
East Hampton.
Southwood has.
So, there's some good ones to look at, potentially.
There's some to look at, yes. East Hampton, but I wouldn't recommend it.
The other thing we've gotta do is also this MS4. Back in December, we got an email from Corinne.
Yeah.
Corinne about MS4 and the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw. We didn't take a good look yet, to be honest with you. I went to the MS4 seminar with Marlo, our DPW head, about a month or so ago in Springfield. Learned more than I care to know about MS4. So, I came back, and I was planning, we were planning on putting something on the annual town meeting warrant next month for this, and when I went through her email, which is pages long on the zoning stuff, and one of the things that I noticed, well, you know, "Could do something here, could do something here." Well, okay, but then she completely, we have a general bylaw on erosion and sediment control, it's what they're called, and then we have a zone bylaw and erosion and sediment control. The reason that was done, I don't know, maybe 10-plus years ago or so, was that any future development would have to comply with zoning. The zone, and the regular... The reason that was done, I don't know, maybe ten plus years ago or so, was that any future development would have to comply with zoning. The zone, and the regular bylaw, anybody that was already there wasn't, was grandfathered in the zoning, but was not grandfathered in the general bylaw, so we had, you know, a catch-all of everybody.
Hmm.
Okay, that's fine. And under the recommendation that she made, she eliminated the zone bylaw and everything was a general bylaw. Now, I understand the logic to that. The problem is if people are applying for development for new projects, how do they know to comply with the general bylaw if there's no mention in the zone bylaw of it?
Because it is mentioned in the zoning bylaw.
No.
It's supposed to be.
It's completely eliminated the section.
But that could be.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to be like that.
Okay. And I, I, and I'm not, I'm not taking it on anybody.
I haven't, I didn't see what she did, so I didn't give any speech.
So I did email her requesting clarification last week and I've not heard that.
So all, all I'm wondering is.
Yeah, the flow.
Yeah, because there's, there's a few things there. One of the questions that I have is that the planning board has the right to amend the general bylaw without going to public hearings or only a public hearing and, and not, and they can adopt it themselves.
Right.
However, because the zone bylaw could re, could reference that, in, in a roundabout way, is the planning board now amending zoning bylaw? You wanna see where I'm going to?
I do. But the way it's modeled to work is it's done as a general bylaw.
Yes.
As done as a general bylaw to pick up those things that aren't subject to zoning, like useful projects.
I, I understand why.
It's supposed to be something, in every, in every passage of your zoning bylaw, the deal with the development, like under site plan review, under special permits, including your subdivision regulations, it's not zoning, it's a different thing, all of those are supposed to have something that references, you have to comply with that.
Right.
And that does, and then whatever that process is, um, and what I normally do is I have, if you're coming in for a site plan review, or you're coming in for a special permit, you're stormwater management is part of that. So you are the ones that are doing it or the peer review that who's doing it. But ultimately for those, since you're the permitting authority, it falls under your responsibility.
So the grant that she was working under has expired, but we need to use part of our programming to get a more, the, what, the document she gave us really was just what we had sent her with annotations in, in the, in, you know, set off bot, comment box in Word. And that, we really need more help setting up a schedule of what documents need to be, or what sections need to be amended and what the exact language of those amendments should be.
Absolutely. I've done that in other communities. I'm glad you mentioned that, because I had no idea.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I understand.
So it's, it's fixable.
I understand, oh yeah, I understand the general bylaw and I agree that it makes sense, so I'm not saying it doesn't. I'm just saying we need to.
Make sure it does.
We need to marry them together in the appropriate and correct way, that's all. And one of the, it's not, she mentioned that we, she recommended no act here this time, because that was back in December. Now that it's almost gonna be the annual town meeting, it's not gonna be on the annual, and that's okay, because whether it's adopted or not, we can still make people comply with MS four. So I'm not worried about that part of it, but for the long term, we're hoping for the Fall Town Meeting, we can make this correction and get that simply put away.
Isn't it, don't all permits, you gotta comply with all federal, state, and local laws?
It's, it's making sure it's incorporated into your process.
Yeah.
Because you, in fact, are the ones who are approving those permits.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I don't think there's any question that if somebody wants to come in, that's supposed to take effect in June. So somebody comes in in July and they apply, I don't think there's any problem with making them comply with the up-to-date MS four. I just wanna make sure that it's in the books for the longer term, so that there's no question of what everything is about, that's all. I agree with you, John, but they're gonna comply.
You're right, John. I mean, MS four starts off as a mandate from the EPA. This, and the regulations to comply with that are supposed to be developed by your state EPA, or DEP as we have it. And it's, and therefore regulations on a project-by-project basis are administered by you guys at the local level.
Yeah.
So there, there is that tier.
Yeah.
But you are correct also that even if it's not in the books, you can still make them do it. And it's, it's to their benefit to do it like that.
Is, as much as the rules were promulgated in other prior administration, with the new administration, is there any change that could be coming down the pipe relaxing the rules?
Like the emission controls?
Yeah, well, that's a great example.
It is.
Emission control has to do with California.
I, I suspect this is low on the list of priorities.
Okay.
In fact, it's, it's in place in many, many other states, and we are sort of one of the last states to actually do it.
Okay.
So.
One point, Susan, when you come with the, the potential bylaw for recreational marijuana, could you give us some of the parameters where there could be some discussion? For example, how many yards away from the school? Or what will the Attorney General allow? What has it allowed as the maximum or the minimum? Just some, something we can discuss. Can it be near a church or a mosque? Because we have a potential mosque.
I can answer, I can answer that in particular.
No, but just, that was my general.
Yeah, which is a, a good point. Because the retail marijuana, and I call it retail, not recreational, because recreational is by right for your personal consumption. We're talking about who can sell it.
Yes.
Um, so I use the word retail. They're totally, that's totally different. There are significant differences between that and the, and the medical marijuana.
Correct.
In term, I mean, the medical marijuana.
But it could be in the same facility.
It can be in the same facility.
What would it mean by right? Would it mean by right that it can be by right? What can be by right?
You can own six plants.
Oh.
If you own six plants yourself, if you're, if you're married, you can have twelve plants.
Okay, okay.
For your own personal consumption.
Oh, for, okay.
That's the recreational.
Okay, okay.
What I'm talking about are people that are growing it and selling it to you.
Okay, okay. All right, I understand. All right, just wanted.
But interestingly, uh, for medical marijuana, we ran into this here, you know, where it had to be so many feet away from a place where children congregate. It included churches and all this other stuff. Um, the retail marijuana does not include any of that.
I thought it did.
It includes elementary schools.
Oh, specifically, specifically schools.
Schools.
Okay.
Doesn't include churches, it doesn't include daycare, it doesn't include private schools. Uh, it really, uh, and, and the question is, some towns are putting it in anyway, and it's sort of, well, we'll see what the AG's office does when we get to them.
Okay.
Um, so there's a lot of that in the works.
Well, isn't it that the towns can regulate how many feet away they have to be?
You can pick a number, but you can't pick a number that is unreasonable. You can't pick a number that.
Ten miles away?
You can't pick a number that puts it out of town.
Well, that's.
But you, but you can't put in a number.
And what about the number?
You can limit the number.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and my suggestion would be, if you're limiting it to less than twenty percent of the package stores that you have in town, you need to go back for another public referendum vote.
Right.
Okay, so you wanna pick twenty-one percent or more. Um, I advise you not to pick a higher number, because the package number licenses are, it's not licenses for package stores, it's actual package stores. That may vary. Um, it seems now that towns are richer.
Package stores and local establishments.
Uh, most is package stores, package stores.
It is package stores, okay.
Yes, it is. Places, you know, it's not a restaurant.
What do you mean, not to exceed?
It's not a bar.
Not to exceed how many package stores did you have?
You can pick a percentage.
So let's say you got ten package stores, you can limit it to twenty, twenty-one percent, which would be two-point-one package.
Two-point-one, you can see fifty percent, East Hampton, I think, picked a hard number, which is not what I'm gonna suggest that you do, only because it's a number of your package stores increases, that might put you below the twenty percent, and then you'd be out of compliance with the state.
So you gotta be a minimum of twenty percent?
You want to be a minimum, you wanna be over twenty percent.
Over twenty.
Because if you're under twenty percent, then you have to do a new public, a new town-wide referendum vote.
So the state has figured that, uh.
You, you got.
Recreational marijuana is only twenty percent as bad as booze?
No, it's, it's more, um, um, at one point, they, do they want the town to go back and re-vote the whole thing all over again.
And there's a two-step process to revoting now.
Yes, yes. It has to do, also has to do whether your town initially voted yes or voted no.
Right.
I think you guys voted yes.
Yes, correct. More majority in favor, so that puts it in a different category.
That puts it in a second, different category.
How many plants can a recreational marijuana, a, a private owner have?
Uh, you can have six as an individual, and if you have a two-person household, you can have up to twelve.
And if there's three people?
You can have up to twelve.
That's it?
Yeah.
Not like talking about a race.
You can't grow in your backyard, you can't have it in the pot in the window, uh, you know, getting sunraged, you're gonna be growing it with grow lights in your basement. Or the spare bedroom you have.
Now, the, uh, the, if a, if a person wanted to grow for retail use, they're under limit to a hundred thousand square feet.
It's a canopy, they're, yeah.
But, but can it be open grow?
I think there is a provision that allows.
No, it has to be the secure facility.
Well, that's the problem. It's supposed to be secure, which everybody realizes, gotta be in a building, but there is a provision, I think they made, for farmer to do a collective grow. But I don't know how they're going to, if they're, if they're growing it outside, I don't know.
I was wondering, 'cause I thought there was a thing.
I don't know how they're gonna.
I thought there was a thing in there about open grow, and I'm thinking, how can you possibly open grow and make it secure?
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Arm guard.
But I know that in the listening sessions that I went to, there were a lot of farmers that came in and saw that this is gonna be great. I'm gonna go from corn to pot. Uh, and, and it's up and down the valley. In fact, uh, every community in Franklin County voted yes, in large part, I think, because uh, the farming community thought, wow, we're gonna really be able to cash in.
But growing marijuana is not considered an agricultural crop.
That's correct.
So if you're growing it on that.
It's not considered to be agriculturally exempt.
Right, right. So if you're, if you're, if it's not, if it's not considered agricultural crop, then my guess is if you try to grow it on sixty-one A land, you're not growing, you no longer have sixty-one A land.
That's correct, you're not in compliance with it anymore.
And I will tell you.
And that question to whether it's APR, whether it's illegitimate anymore.
No. I, I put that question to the Office of General Counsel at Mass Department of Ag Resources, and they flat-out said no.
Yeah.
That to the extent they have, they use federal money.
That's you.
Towards the APR purchases.
Then you definitely can.
So you can't grow on an APR land.
You cannot grow on an APR land.
That's true, that's because it's federal.
I was wondering about that one.
The Fed's still classified this as a class-one narcotic.
So because, because the state get, the state doesn't allocate, I'm gonna use ten percent of the Fed dollars to purchase an APR from you, but no Fed dollars to purchase an APR from you. They spread Fed dollars across all of their APR purchases. So every project is, uh, they, they say that they have accepted money and allowing growth of marijuana would violate the representations they made when they accepted the money.
So on APR, they cannot?
On APR, you cannot grow marijuana.
And, and there are also other issues relative to it that I, I was not aware of, but apparently marijuana really absorbs what's in the ground. Uh, in fact, in the olden days, farmers used marijuana to cleanse their fields, to get all the toxins and the metals and the poison, the fertilizer.
Corn.
To clean it, exactly. And so.
And beef radish.
And so in large part, you know, people that are buying pot off the street, you know, it's not quality controlled, whereas the stuff they're doing under this program is tested, and it's tested for all that stuff. So the quality of, of the, the product that you're getting is much cleaner than what you would be buying off the street.
Marijuana, what I've heard, marijuana stinks horribly. Like tobacco smells like tobacco.
You mean what, the plant?
The plant, the green plant smells like a skunk.
Growth, growth facilities, uh, the air quality controls is a big issue, because they do. They have a particular odor, the scum is strong. And so there's all kinds of.
It smells like a skunk. What the hell is everybody smel, smoking skunk for?
When it dried? I don't know.
Very good.
That's what I've heard, people that have gone into, into.
My license.
Grow canopy facilities or grow facilities.
Renew my license and grow marijuana on the farm at the same time.
It's gross like a big skunk.
Because it is a Schedule I narcotics law.
So these guys in the house?
Yeah, that's right.
I was wondering, I heard.
And also too, being on the bank board, banks cannot accept, because all banks are federally insured lending institutions. However, Colorado, FDIC did grant an exemption to Colorado.
Yeah.
Because they wanna track the money and tax it, so.
That's correct.
Will there be a blanket exemption, but the federal government doesn't?
Yeah, not so far.
Not so far, that's right.
And I'm not using Colorado as my model.
No, I mean, they're first, they.
They were first.
They had a lot of mistakes.
They had a lot of mistakes. There were more, uh, retail marijuana facilities than there are Starbucks. And there are lots of Starbucks.
Yeah.
So they're like in every corner. Uh, yeah.
So we don't wanna completely upend everything that you had planned to talk about. But.
Those are priorities.
Those have become priorities.
Yep.
The MS four and to a lesser extent, we can talk about Master, some, some things aren't ready to go, but those are, seem to have made themselves the A and B priorities.
Okay.
And the master plan update would be the C priority, and within that, we'll probably wanna pick out some things.
I, I, I mean, for what is happening, it sounds like recreational marijuana is being built by PBPC in general as a model, and they can be fine-tuned to the different towns.
Right.
And the MS four, I don't think is a humongous task. I think it's really clarifying what was originally meant, and then how do we simply integrate the general, I referencing it into the regular zone bylaws, we don't make a mess of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but is the state all done with their part, putting what they wanna do, the EPA, the DEP, are they all done with?
Just about.
With their part?
Yeah.
They are?
So what Corinne did was fine to a point, I think it was completely compliant with the terms of the grant, which was to highlight what needed to be done. But what she didn't do was what we need you to do, which is actually.
Cut and paste.
Cut and paste, you know, give us, give us the, the exact language for the, if we're gonna have to cha, make changes to twelve sections of the zoning bylaw, we want the exact language that's coming out and the exact language that's going in.
Yeah, I would prefer, if possible, not to amend a bunch of different sections.
Sure.
I would like to make, if we had to, like in the administrative part, say, make a general statement, 'cause if, 'cause MS four has been updated, this is at least the second time. And it's going to be updated again in a number, in probably not too many years. So rather than going through and always doing this, and doing this, and doing this, I would like to have one section that simply says, this is how, where you're going to comply, no matter where the zone bylaw applies, so that it applies to all sections. We could have, we could have a general erosion and control of references, the actual general bylaw. Or something in administrative, whether it be site plan approval, or this, or this, or this. This is what you're going to comply with in some kind of a general term. As opposed to every time having to go through and, you know, modify six or seven other sections. It's just gonna be a mess.
And MS four is stormwater management.
Larry, I, I've heard with this MS four.
Yeah.
It's gonna come in a drainage tax.
Uh, they call it a stormwater utility.
Is that?
It's town by town, uh, somebody, a town by town would adopt.
The rain tax?
We did it, yeah.
Is that gonna be mandated?
We adopted it when I was in Westfield.
Is that gonna be mandated, or is that just town by town?
It's gonna be high, you know, uh, we did it in Westfield because that was a way to raise the money we needed to, to have the funds to comply with it.
Yeah, Northampton did it. That was the, their excuse was to me.
Chickapie, Westfield, Northampton.
Fall River.
Uh, I'm talking about locally around here, and I think Long Island has done it.
He got beat because he proposed the rain tax.
I think, was it Greenfield? Greenfield a town?
I'm not sure about Greenfield.
I think there's one Franklin County town, and I think there's almost four towns in Hampshire and Hamden.
Cause it's not, you know, it's not without cost.
Yeah, I know, cause the guy.
But I mean, when the town appropriates money to do a specific thing, they do that. But when they appropriate and make a tax, that tax is forever. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I, I don't like all this luxury tax with CPA, rain tax, dance tax.
I think rain and stormwater is pretty much forever.
The, uh.
It would just have to deal with it.
You know, eventually it's gonna go to everything else but rain and.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's pretty tight. Uh, stormwater utility is pretty tight, because of how you have to spend that money. You're not spending it for fire trucks, you're not spending it for school teachers, you're spending it on stormwater.
Well, like the social security trust fund.
Although, absolutely not like that. Just the opposite of that.
You know, it, it, you can call it what you want, but it's another tax. And John, John's right. And then the guy from Chickapie that was presenting at, at the, like I said, the MS four was pretty clear on that. And he said that their, their stormwater fee brings in about, I think he said somewhere around one or two million dollars a year maximum. But they're spending about twenty million a year just separating their.
Sewer.
Their sewer separating system. He's there, I think the number he used was, they're about, I don't know. Sixty-five percent complete. They spent about a hundred and, I don't know, a hundred fifty million, whatever it was. The last thirty-five percent, they figure it'll cost two hundred and twenty million.
Have they doesn't have stormwater in the sewer?
No, that's right.
You are fortunate you didn't make.
Right.
Many of the cities, you know.
The closed system.
Centuries ago made that decision where you have one big bike, and there's a little wall that goes down the middle of it on the floor, and stormwater's on one side.
Right.
The cemetery's on the left, and when the stormwater flows, it mixes together and flushes out.
Right, all mixes together.
I think it was the same guy that said that they, I think he was the person who said, one inch of rain. Their normal flow was like three million gallons a day?
Wow.
Four million gallons a day?
Yeah, but.
One inch of rain raises their flow to twelve million.
We don't even compare it to that.
You know, he says, well, that's the kind of problem they have.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, then the real problem is also the combined storm outlets.
Yeah.
You know, they've gotta monitor to, uh, see what the.
Yeah, yeah, but anyways.
Greenfield had that, Northampton, two, two systems in one. That's what it was.
Well, the nice thing is most of the other towns who are just, you know, who have not, you know, didn't have stormwater, uh, or, you know, or standard saving back then, they're now all putting it into separate systems, and that's great. Cause you don't root for that problem.
Right. Anyway, anyway, they had sewer back in early nineteen hundreds, had combined. Yeah, they just started getting, didn't get a sewer system until the sixties?
Yeah, the sixties came to have the.
Yeah.
And, you know, they were smart enough to separate them.
Yeah.
Whether by law or by choice, I'm not sure, but.
Probably by cost at that point. The stormwater was probably already in.
Yeah.
To some extent.
Yeah, right.
So it was just easier to put in a separate, you know, separate dedicated.
Most of the stormwaters, drainage was built by the farmers, the drainage system in this town, not, not the town.
Okay, anyways, back to, uh, schedule. So like Bill says, we've got, you know, MS four and marijuana, which hopefully won't be a monumental tasks to do.
Right.
It'll be more of a detailed thing, I think, than anything, especially with the stormwater.
Yeah.
And then we, then we can go into the implementation of the master plan.
Okay.
So within the implementation, um, we've been spending a lot of time talking about affordable housing, inclusionary zoning, affordable housing trust funds. And we've spent a lot of time going around in circles on all of those. But within the master plan implementation, I think we'd probably like to wrap those up.
And Ashley's working.
Yeah, Ashley, Ashley's.
The inclusionary zoning and the senior housing amendments are both going to be on the annual town meeting.
Good.
Okay, they'll take, they'll take, including getting, getting rid of the trust fund wording, wording for the time being.
Okay.
Just as a piece of information, we may have a lady here from the Valley.
CDC.
CDC.
Okay.
At our first meeting of May to talk about affordable housing and the requirements to meet it.
Good.
And the trust fund, so that I think, you know, that, that, that you're gonna meet it. In fact, I, I saw her last night, and I said, that'd be a good meeting to come to, cause I said Larry will be here, and hopefully you may can make it. So that, um.
Ashley, Ashley should be here.
Enjoy it as well.
And.
The, the normal meetings are the first, first Tuesday.
Okay, first Tuesday.
For PBPC.
Okay, we, tell you, is that what Amy Fiden was talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. She sent me an email today. I didn't get it out to everyone.
Yeah.
And our finance committee members is on the CDC board.
Okay.
So that's why she was making.
Right.
Did they do the monitor?
Yes, yes. Yes. And so she's going to explain the process to us. I said, that would be great.
That would be great.
Amy was not gonna explain. No, no, there's a lady, there's a lady, there's a lady, there's a. Amy said it's very complicated.
David said, yeah, well, we know that. We, we, we know that.
We're, we're not trying to become experts either. We just wanna get the explanation from, I wanna call it the expert, from somebody that actually does it. So we get a better feeling for it as opposed to, you know, there's, and that's it. Okay.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll be on the first one in May.
Which is why we'd like to move that to the top of the master plan implementation. Because we've, we've spent, what, we spent six months on this, and we have virtually nothing to show for it, so. But we have some momentum going, so I think.
Well, we didn't have a clear understanding. We still don't.
I understand, I understand, though. But that's why I'm asking to make it a pri- make it a priority within the implementation.
There is no wolf at our door. At least that thirteen percent affordable, which is the highest in Happy Valley. And under the present rate, uh, it would, it would take fifty years before we get below. I know, I know. Let me finish the statement.
Okay.
It would get, it would take fifty years to get below the ten percent threshold required by the state. However, we do have a certain number of units coming off at Mountain View. And, uh, so, uh, those still wouldn't put us below the ten percent required. But there is not a wolf at our door, but a strong pussycat growling. So we, Bill is right. We should kinda wrap this up. And, but first we have to become educated. You're right. The number that we heard was that there's twenty-five units coming off in about five years.
Okay.
And then I think it's seven or eight years after that, eighty come off.
That's gonna be it.
So in roughly a dozen years from now, we will lose a hundred and five out of two hundred and ninety-five units.
That has gotta put you under the cap or something.
That's correct. However, you know, we have some options. We can talk to developers, what can be done to keep them up. In fact, I talked to some people last night, um, about this, so that the selectmen, I mentioned it to one of the selectmen, one of the selectmen candidates, a couple of selectmen candidates last night, and said, you know, this is what's going on. We don't need to do something tomorrow, but we do need to do something reasonably soon to start this.
You need to start having the conversation tomorrow, because in five years.
Right.
Cause it takes, it takes, it takes, there's a lot of characters you have to bring into the play to make that happen.
And, uh, so, you know, anyways, there, there's things that, that need to be done for both issues. For both different, cause there's two different locations. One is about, is the twenty-five units are those small complex right to the west of Stop and Shop Plaza.
Okay.
And the eighty units are Windfield across the street. There will still be over eighty plus units left there and plus what they have.
There's green, green leaves over there?
Hmm?
Green leaves? No?
Well, green, and in Hadley, it's wind, it's wind, it's called Windfield Green Leaves. I'm not exactly sure what part of the project.
Windfield's in Hadley?
I think so, yeah.
The family housing is in Hadley, and the, some of the, the senior rental housing is in Hadley.
Yeah.
The senior condos are in Amherst.
But.
But that's Windfield?
It's that complex.
Green Leaves, Windfield.
It's kinda like the same thing. Yeah, I don't know where, where the dividing line.
I think Green Leaves might be the elderly, uh, the senior, and Windfield is the family.
Okay. But anyways, the complex across the street from Stop and Shop, on, on the south side of Route nine, is the eighty units.
Which you can't even see.
Right.
Okay.
But anyways, we, we, the, the selectmen and the planning board need to start doing something there and getting the dialogue going to find out, you know, how do we keep some or all, and how do we do what's required, et cetera, and.
How do you approach them?
I think CDC actually own, Valley CDC owns the, um, Mountain View, I think.
I think so.
That might end up not, not coming off.
Well, that, that, then that's something we can discuss with the lady in the months from now. Okay, that'd be great. That's fine. However, before we put the cart before the horse, we need to get the discussions going. And we need to do whatever we reasonably can to keep those things on the books, so that we don't fall behind the eight ball. And hopefully, selectmen are watching this, or at least the word gets to them that we can't do nothing.
That's what I said before with Barry Roberts, that should be required for him to either build it there or build it offsite and get it done.
We, we're changing that now, John. Anyways. Plus, the other thing.
It's just obligated.
We, we do learn a few lessons along the way, that Mountain View Apartments was a friendly forty B. It was not friendly at all. They really tucked it to us. I mean, they had their toes crossed, fingers crossed. It was something that. They were given a good lesson. But, you know, but, but before we, you know, get too carried with those, I'm just making a comment that we, we have to be on top of things. We can't just say, oh, we're set. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta, we truly have to plan these out.
Now, you've been looking at the implementation schedule as a whole. Were, did you, was, was there anything, were there ones that you specifically thought would be?
Well, without knowing too much about any of these, um, I was, uh, talking to Larry about trying to identify some of the things that were, you know, easier to do, so that you can make some progress. And, um, one of the things we were talking about was the transfer of development rights bylaw. And he said that there are some things that, um, could be done to strengthen that, and, um, so I went to hear back from you about your feelings on if that one should move to the top of the priority list to make that, uh, work a little better.
Yeah, one of those we talked about was, uh.
Jim Hatt.
Adding the building height trigger to that.
Not necessarily the height, but the, uh, we have a limitation on the size of a building.
Yeah.
And so Jim was, that was his idea, so I don't wanna steal it, but.
It gets a good idea.
Add some TDR. No, we've got, we've got a seventy-five thousand square foot limit on size, footprint. Seventy-five thousand square foot, um, footprint, if you would. And, you know, by allowing a larger building and contributing to TDR in a proportional manner, um, we could allow, we, you know, could we allow, or should we allow, larger buildings? One of the things that the town is being pressured, pressured with is, you know, um, business tax dollars. That there are some businesses, we haven't seen a lot of business growth to speak of in the last, I don't know, ten years, give or take.
Not that much land left.
And.
And that's the point.
That, that, that's another point.
Yeah. Your people you have sold is, is limited, and your choices either go out, which you probably don't wanna do, or go up, which you probably do less.
And, you know, so the possi-, you know, would, would, would a developer wanna go up?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. I'm, I'm, we, we don't, we don't know that, you know, what's the cost versus the benefit? Obviously, you know.
Is it Amherst doing four or five stories?
Well, if you talk to hotels and stuff, that.
Well, they're, they, that's because they want apartments. We don't want apartments.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, they're, they're putting business on the bottom floors and the top, upper two floors are typically.
Yeah, but you can build a five-story building and not have apartments.
That, that's true. And, and my only comment to that is, is it cost effective? You know, we, we don't know. That's something that would have to take some discussion, you know, or possibly do, put the, put the bylaw out there. And does a developer, does anything happen with it? She can talk to one of your fellow members that was instrumental in, uh. He hasn't worked there.
You don't have to go any, yes, he has. You don't have to go any further. I think when we get to that point, when we talk about having listening sessions, that would probably be a good topic.
Yeah, okay.
Kind of flush some things out, and let's bring that stakeholder group in, and thoughts and all. That's like, that's perfect.
Okay. Um, okay.
So that was one of the things I was also thinking about, was the listening sessions, and, um, I was wondering about what topics, so here's one.
Here's one.
You know, what could be done, you know? Is, you know, Joe's favorite words are, you know, zoning is a fine balance between the rights of the developer and the rights of the, of the property owner, or the local butters, whatever you wanna call them. And in this case, it's, it's a, it's a balance of, you know, we have this much farmland, we wanna preserve farmland, but if we don't sacrifice some land sometimes, you won't have farmland, cause it's gonna be too expensive. So, you know, that's a, it's a, it's a, the balancing act is getting more difficult to walk because of the buildout occurring on Route nine. And, um, you know, we've, we've done something north and south on forty-seven to lessen the possibility of large facilities going there. But, and, and we also don't wanna price it so much. The other thing about that all is you wanna make, ensure that reasonable mom and pops can sprout and grow. Cause if you make land, business land so expensive, all you're gonna get are big conglomerates. And the mom and pops are gonna be, we can't afford to be in Hadley.
But even you talk mom and pop, you took the Route forty-seven corridor, and most of that land now is all tied up in APRs. So what the hell are you gonna do? Nothing.
Generate APRs and single-family detached homes.
This is true.
So the other thing is we'll, at some point, probably be looking at reuse. And we sort of, we've seen some of that already, that their Mountain Farms Mall completely demolished the old Almies Wing to put in the Walmart.
Okay.
And we'll probably see more of that as well.
Is any of that original left?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, the. From.
Like Panera Bread and all the way down to.
From basically Barnes and Noble down towards.
Almost to Whole Foods.
Almost to Whole Foods is original, but it's been completely redone.
Yeah.
Okay, but the, the shell is the same.
Wow, I just thought it was just.
No.
Levelled and.
But, but however, you know, Hampshire Mall is now coming into play of, you know, the old Mountain Farm was a bit easier to turn into storefronts.
Yeah, this is.
Because it wasn't so deep.
That's right.
Whereas Mount, Hampshire Mall is a very deep facility with a center court down the middle, for lack of a term. And to make that Route nine facing of storefronts, I'm never saying never, but it'll take, no. I don't know the cost effectiveness of that, so I'm not gonna comment. But, you know, there's a number of semi-vacant building facilities in there. I mean, they've been able to keep up with stuff to, to their credit.
Yeah.
But with all the rest of stuff of, uh, online ordering and everything else, it's a matter of time before some of those just aren't there anymore.
Yeah, but a lot of them, they're going into service type, not the retail business.
Yeah, service.
Other uses.
And far as, far as the corridor going north, all these smaller houses,
you're gonna see corporations buy one, two, and three, and knock them down, and that's what's gonna happen there. The mom and pop business is out the window. So, and that's the reality.
So, listening sessions, anything else on your?
Listening sessions, uh, let's see. I saw a reference to the site plan bylaws, and I, but I wasn't sure what. If you guys had any feelings about what needed to change there, or.
We've had a version of site plan approval, uh, for as long as I've been here, so thirty years.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Site plan review, then it became.
Site plan approval, and then became.
And then it was knocked out because of the suit for Pyramid Corporation, we dissolved it, and we got it back again. It's, it's gone through a transition. It's gone through some stuff, and the, I mean, it's, it, we modify little sections of it here and there as needed.
Yeah.
But for the most part, I personally think site plan approval works pretty well the way it is.
And we do, we do have a.
I don't, I don't know the wording of the exact kind of.
It's a discussed strengthening the site plan bylaw and process.
Yeah.
So we have a built-in safety valve there, and I don't know how the AG let it go through, but we have authority within site plan approval to waive any condition that we do not consider to be, uh, key to the, uh, to the site, to, to the application.
That, that's, uh, a good thing, because, um, site plan approvals are supposed to be almost impossible to deny. You know, if you look at the, is it, is that set up under legislation, set up under a court case? It's a queue process, not a permit. And so your basic choices are approving it, approving with conditions, and that's pretty much it. You're gonna disapprove it, because it's for a by right use. Um, so disapproving a site plan is really difficult.
Our, our site plan, just so you'll, when you read it, you're gonna see, it's a special permit process.
Yes, that's good.
And the reason that was done was, before it was a special permit process, we would re-approve it. But there was no way to appeal it if somebody was, felt they were hurt by it.
Right.
They had to wait for the building inspector to issue the building permit. And then I think they have thirty days to appeal the building permit.
It's moving, isn't it?
And a lot of developers would get our approval, let's say, today, and they wouldn't apply sometime for six, eight, nine, or a year. And so the low, the butters are constantly hounding the building inspector, have they applied, have they applied? Have they applied? Have they applied? Have they applied? And if they haven't applied for the building permit, or they don't question the building inspector, he apply, they get, he gets the building permit, he approves it, thirty days goes by, and it's tough luck. That happened a number of, that happened a number of times.
Now, a lot of site plans do have a, a, a process for it, so you don't have to have that gap.
So, we put it in as a special permit process, simply that it's approved today, the paperwork is filed, there's a twenty-day appeal period. A butters are notified, twenty-one days, no appeal, go forward. And the general, the attorney general made a specific comment to that. It's actually part of our, at the very end of our bylaw, that the only thing that that special permit for site plan approval does is exactly what we set. Okay? It's not a special permit in that they need to jump through all kinds of hoops to get. It's simply for the appeal system of it.
Usually, it's, it's a site plan review, but you're following the special permit process.
Yeah, although technically, you could say, anything below a thousand square feet is exempt. So, it is a special permit to erect a structure in excess of a thousand.
But that's different from the site plan.
No, that's built into site.
Yeah, because the site plan can't be a special permit. It's got to be an administrative process.
Well, ours is set, that's the way ours is set up.
Maybe that's why we had to go there to take a look at.
Yeah.
But if you get the zoning bylaw, at the very end of the zoning bylaw, there is a footnote that explains what, I think, I, I think I even took the words from that attorney general's approval and put it into the, at the end of the bylaw so that it's clear that this is what it is. So, that's not confusing it as a true special permit. It's more for the, for the process. And the attorney general approved it that way.
So, it gives anybody an appeal?
It gives anybody a definite appeal period, clear starting, a clear start and a clear end.
You have to have an appeal process integrated into it.
Yeah, yeah, because
Typically, you do it like the way you did it. You just follow the same ones you do for a special permit.
Yeah.
Two years ago, we, we no longer require the builders to submit a performance bond. And we let that responsibility go to the building inspector. Is the board happy with that segment the way it's working now? Or should we change it back the way for performance bond? Is there any towns that do it differently?
You still have, you still can do it.
Do it differently?
Right, you still can
I don't know a whole lot that require performance bonds for special permits.
We had it in our, we had it in our site plan approval.
Okay, so what's a performance bond for?
To ensure that they build, to build what they say.
So that if they don't, then you're going to go take their money and do it like there was a
Well, so it ended up being, it ended up being a club, and that's one, one reason why we dropped it. Because it's much more effective to have the building inspector deny a CO
That's exactly right.
Than cash out a bond. And I will speak for another department, the treasurer's office is quite happy to not have to track performance bonds.
The, my wife is the treasurer.
That's a conflict of interest.
Up to, up to a few years ago, a building inspector kept saying he can't deny a CO if they don't build it exactly what they say. And I said, what issue, what's, what version of the building code or whatever it was changed? And he then said, okay, I now have authority that if they don't build what they say, I can deny a CO. And that was how the elimination of the, of the, of the bond came about.
You know what I also do is I also put a clause in there, in their condition of approval of the special permit, that they can't apply for the CO until they, they admit that.
But that's mainly
So, that kind of takes the onus off of the building inspector feeling like, oh, I can't, I can't withhold it. No, you can't even apply it. As the advocate, you can't even ask for it.
Oh, would you send me that?
Would we, would we
That's a good paragraph. That's good.
Was it, what, what we really wanted was when people put in subdivisions and roads, that, that the town is assured that they've put that road into compliance.
And that's the difference because the town's going to end up owning it.
Right, but I mean, uh, somebody's business or something, what the hell is the planning board want to go in there and finish building of the bill?
Well, they don't, I think what they were saying was it's a, it's a carrot or more a club. A club, which is we're going to hold on to your money, you're not getting it back.
So, as a practical matter, we never, we never foreclosed on anything like that. And it, it was awkward and we probably would not have liked the results if we had to try to step in. And we've been fairly fortunate with developers and subdivisions. There have been some communities, John, where the developer gets three-quarters of the way through the process, it goes bankrupt.
Yeah.
And that's why we have the performance for the road. Because we now have, half the houses have been built, and they're expecting town services and
Correct. It's not like you can just stop and not do anything because you've got homeowners there.
Now, fortunately, we have not, in thirty years, we've not had to foreclose on a subdivision performance bond either. Although there are a couple of streets out there that
But the Harley Road, the taxpayers bit the bullet and paid to rebuild that.
But as I, as I mentioned at town meeting, for that particular subdivision, that was approved before any of us were on the planning board.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Let's take something.
Don't make any difference about that, but that was the example.
Right.
Right there.
That, that was the example of why we needed to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
That's one of the reasons I ran, and so
Yeah, we just have to, you're right, you're subdivision rank, like the
That was, there were nothing.
Was Joseph Grammick on that board then?
No.
I, I ran because they, they didn't have the capability of handling something like that.
They figured he was old enough, then he went back that way.
Well, he remembers it. He was a young man back then.
With dark hair.
Anything, I think we probably have at least six months of work for you.
Okay.
It sounds like we're in pretty good shape. If you go through that list after and find anything else that, you know, you want to bring forward.
Larry, that you were working on, like definitions, that
Definitions, you've got them.
Okay, so that's all set.
Yeah, there were.
Oh, let's, well, we'll, let's put that
Because you've got those. I went over them with the building inspector.
Yeah.
But he said
He always has heartburn over that because he tries to define it.
So, would you, before you clean out your desk, would you clean out your computer and make sure you email me one of everything that you've worked on?
Okay.
Because I know that there, there have been some transitions, and we've had, we've worked with other people. We've had this contract for about
You've been digging stuff off the two people prior to you.
Yeah, we, we've had this contract for about fifteen years.
Okay.
And in fact, I initiated it back when I was chair of PBPC because Tim Brennan had talked about another town where they had something like this. It didn't work out half as well. And so we've had it for quite a while, and people have worked on various projects for us. And then we looked back and we had, we tried to go through some, uh, just some brochures for how the development process works. And I have some, but whoever worked, was working on them, you don't seem to have any on your end anymore.
Yeah, we had to, stuff, stuff to get that stuff up. There was a, there used to be a West Springfield. That's where it are, this used to be.
Oh, okay.
Apparently, there was a water spring or flood or something, when it was paper, that pretty much wiped out tons of stuff.
Yeah, and we, we've also, over the years, had your GIS people work on various maps for us. But as Larry explained at one point, a prior GIS guru had a very unique naming system for the, the documents. So, it was hard, if I didn't already have a copy, there, there are paper copies of maps. We'd like to have electronically, but no one seems to know how to
Yeah.
Reach them.
It would be like you naming your files, finished, I want you to have them breakfast that morning. But you may remember, we had the white.
So, I would appreciate it if you, I assume you probably have one big file for
I, I had, it's, 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 it's pretty well organized from oh eight on.
Okay. So, if you could just do a document dump.
Okay.
And I'll move it to my server and Jim
Even if it's on, if it's too big, put it on a, on a flash drive or something. That'd be more convenient. As opposed to mailing fifty emails of twenty, of two megabytes each or whatever.
They'd have, John, have to print up hard copies of everything, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you get a couple of flash drives, I could keep one. I keep a lot of stuff on my server in my office. Jim keeps a lot of stuff in his laptop. Uh, we do not have access to the town hall server, which apparently has only, town hall is only within the last month installed the server. They have a server now.
Whoa, that's good. That is great.
Somebody raided the capital, or they couldn't afford it.
So, yeah, they have a server, they have a network, the computers can speak to each other nominally, but anyway.
It needs, it's a good start.
Well, I mean, you guys are our flagship PBA. You know, we've been doing you for like, I think it's like thirteen, fifteen years, something like that. And sort of everything else is modeled after this. I think we're up to like, we were up to seven at one point, helping down various capacities, doing different, every town's a little bit different.
You're doing a couple for Hadley. You're doing, I mean, or the CPA.
Yep, CPA as well, that's right.
The TDR, Hadley was the first with a TDR.
Okay.
And probably certainly the most successful. I don't know how other towns have been successful with it. But Hadley has brought in some significant money through the TDR, through the APR. But I want to, I want to say there's well, it's into seven figures.
So, at one time, town, the conservation commission had to go to town meeting each year to ask for a appropriation to fund the town's match for development rights. Uh, we haven't done that in
Long time.
Fifteen years.
Because you just used the
Because we have enough money that comes in from TDR. They, they still have to go to town meeting to authorize the spending of it. But it is not money that is coming out of the general fund.
Between, between the CPA and the TDR, they've been able to fund the town's portion of APR.
Yep.
And it's, it's worked better than we've probably, any of us ever thought.
Yep, that was the map we were looking at.
So, and then, of course, if you share, it'd be, it'd be a lot easier for you to get everything in one, one flash drive.
Oh, I have access.
Everything we have is on the servers. She has access to that.
And, and we'll make him, make him tell you what his abbreviations are.
Yes.
They're very well organized.
To the credit PBPC, you know, the people that we've had working with us over the years have been excellent. We have absolutely no complaints about everything. They've been, they've done an excellent job. We are extremely happy and have had wonderful results, and it shows.
In fact, the reason we have had so much turnover is everyone has left for a better job.
Pretty much.
They get trained well.
Except me.
Because you're still leaving.
What the hell are you guys tapping them on the back so much?
Being a retired grandfather might be
Yeah, that's true.
It's a promotion.
It's, it's, it's good. It's all good.
So, so, yes, we, we've enjoyed working with you. It's been good for you, I think, to have, be able to get some hands-on experience in some of the areas that you're doing. According to what Tim has told me, not all regional planning agencies have a land use section. But to the extent you have one, we're, we're happy to make use of it.
Okay. Well, I mean, our feeling is this is, this is a program we should be making available to all. We have so many, you know, less than half of our towns have professional staff for it. And so they don't have anything else. And as I say, this is like the flagship. This is like the model. And that we will make ourselves available to more and more of the community. They've been taking, taking advantage of us. Advantage a bit. You know, it's worked out pretty well.
They want to use as a reference, have us call Bill and myself. In this
Did you tell them there's a certain fee that goes with that? Consultant fee?
Oh, yeah, there is.
We'll give you a discount.
No free lunches today.
So, um, so it looks, rather than keep on going, I think, I think we have
Sounds great.
I think you got
Pretty full.
We don't want, we don't want to bury, if you get, like Bill said, we get these things for, that's, that's a lot to do in the next six months, even for the rest of the year.
Right, right. And we do have help, so that's good too.
And if you have a contract, the contract is typically comes up every, our fiscal year ends
End of June.
End of June. So, but, so July one, we like to, we like to have the new contract at least at our hand.
We get it to you around May.
Right, and I think last year, we at least got the thing signed by everybody, but Larry lost it before the fiscal year ran out. However, typically, within the first month or so of the fiscal year, everything has been formulated, signed, and everything, all the pieces dotted or whatever it might be.
The other thing, would you just make sure your billing department, they, they got behind the eight ball last year?
Their understanding is the town has a longer timeframe after the end of the fiscal year to pay bills than I think some towns
Yeah, because you can, they can encumber that.
Yeah.
It's not just you.
But I think the issue was, we didn't get the bill until after the end of the fiscal year.
Then you can't encumber it.
We can encumber it.
Right.
But give us, give us an, even an email of what to encumber. So, we can let the account and the treasurer know, so they can encumber it. And if we get the bill a little bit later, that's fine. It'll be fine, but last year, we didn't even know what to encumber.
Yeah, we, we got that problem.
Yeah.
We're going to have some paperwork.
And Happy is trying very hard. I think they want to have the, they want to set the last 2018 warrant in July, within, within July.
Two weeks.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, they don't want to let the money flow.
Right. Nope.
So, you want to get paid, we want to pay our bill.
Good. That sounds good.
Welcome aboard, Susan.
Thank you very much. It's very nice to meet all of you.
You have any cards?
Have any?
Business cards?
Oh, not yet.
Well, yeah.
No, I don't know when they're coming. I can't ask about that.
What the hell is this?
They're supposed to be
I tell you, I still have
Ordering them.
I still have the box of mine that I got six years ago when I started.
Who the hell wants your card? Everybody knows who you are.
They know where to find me.
Right.
You live across the river.
That's true.
You're an old dog that's been around for a long time.
That's true.
That's true.
Yeah, all right, great.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you in a month.
Yes.
Sorry to be so late.
No problem. This is early for us.
So, you got everything all figured out? When you're going to retire, what are you going to do?
Uh, pretty much.
Pretty much, huh?
Pretty much.
You going to take a trip around the world or something?
Well, we just, you know, traded in bought a new raft for. If we're going to be traveling, we might as well have a car after a breakdown.
That's right.
Good plan, good plan.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you again.
Nice meeting you.
Good night. Do we have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
You have anything, John?
No.
I have nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
All a favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history. Thank you, and thank you, John.